We can get at the next meeting.
Okay.
Conservation, still looking at Door Road. There seems to be access to a forest down there, but it's got a gate on it and nobody knows who put the gate up or what the gate is. So Tom has looked at it. Glenn Greenwood is looking at it. And also, there's a discussion about the road being discontinued. And there's a whole definition about what happens with a discontinued road. So they're, they're looking into that and see what comes up there. The other good thing is Graham did meet with Greg from the Trails Committee and they did finalize the locks. All the knockbox locks are at all the gates that we have on all our trails, but there was concern with different keys, the keys of the locks being in there. The keys now are all the right keys for the right locks in those knockboxes. So if the fire department has to get in, in a hurry, they can open the gate.
Did that address some of the issues? Wasn't there a warrant article to make sure that we had a fire management plan for some of the trails in the forest? That's part of that process? Okay. Thank you.
And Saturday, there is a seed giveaway by the pollinators at the Recreation Center. And just as an aside, Susan, did she come in to get the facilities?
It is in.
It is in. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Apparently Paul must have filled it out for the last seven years because she had never heard about it.
They didn't always come to us, so it only came in today, so.
Right. Well, I said to her, I said, if you get it in today, we'll at least why sign off on it. I'm sure the others will sign off.
I did get a, Graham signed it. Joel just had a question about how many people and if whether there'd be parking on the road. I did hear back from Margie this evening and she said, there are quite a few people, but they come and go and nobody would be parking on the road. So I didn't get that back to Joel, but that was his concern.
Thank you.
And that's it?
Okay, thank you. I don't think I can leave tonight because I've been gone for the last two weeks, so.
I have nothing to report at this time.
And Laurie?
I have a couple of things. I met with Tom last week for DPW, so as you can see, the attic insulation is well underway and there's been lots of emails about that. He did have some questions about the budget, so he requested for December as the new date. So it'll be for December. And his line item for, he had a couple of items on ARPA. So he needed to get with Tom, I don't know how to say his last name, our electrician.
Oh.
That, that, yes, him, yes. I should be able to pronounce a rough name, but thank you.
The Greek version.
Right. Okay. He has the material list, so he got that from Phil. So he just needs to purchase that, but he wants to finalize a couple of other things with Tom. So that's for that stuff. I spoke with Ryan from WaterTech today and he, about installing the systems at all the town buildings we talked about for ARPA, right? So he went out last week to all the buildings. He tested water. The highway department is just over the limit for PFAS and they have low pH. He's going to do the estimate in the next couple of days and get that to us, but he just wanted to give me, I asked him if he had a status so we could talk about it. Police, collectively, there's six or seven parts that are high, so they're testing high for PFAS and low pH. So he will do, the low pH is a separate filter. So the PFAS are two different tanks and the low pH will be a separate filter. So he's going to give us costs for all of that. For the town hall, tested positive for PFAS, just over the limit, but everything else was fine. Fire, so because of the treatment system, there's no PFAS showing, but there's a pre-treatment equipment prior to that where it looks like hasn't been serviced because WaterTech services the PFAS part, but doesn't service the pre-equipment. And that's where the smell and the taste and all of those problems are because there's no salt, it hasn't been serviced. So he's going to look at that and give us the recommendation for that. He says for yearly treatment, it's like $500 to do the pre-equipment stuff. So long and short of it is, he'll have some numbers to us in the next couple of days so that we can make our determination for the rest of the, how to move forward with that.
Excellent.
Okay? Yep?
How soon you forget, right?
No, well, no, it was a tough re-entry. That's all I got to say. First item of unfinished business is the ledge road permitting question regarding building the house or replacing the building that's there now. And we had a correspondence of legal counsel and we were asking our building inspector, code enforcement officer Pedro Avia, to come forward and help us resolve this situation.
Good evening, board. Yes, so what we are departing is I don't have jurisdiction in order to render the approval for a permit. The property is accessed via an easement that is of a private road. And for RSA 27631, column 31, that was the RSA that Glenn Greenwood called. The state under the RSA determines that a building permit cannot be issued on non-public ways or roads that are non, to road standards with the state. That's the last communication I had with Glenn Greenwood on that. We met Mr. McDonough, property owner, here about two weeks ago, and we have explained that to him. And he's just aware that, that right now, we don't have the means to be able to issue a building permit on that, on that property that he wants to do, the work that he wants to do on that property.
So, I was going to say, so there is no plat that indicates a subdivision as a street of that area?
Though, and then to what I think, I don't know, how does that fit within the legal description of the property? One thing is to have, what I have said, a legal lot of record that is existing lot of record. And one thing is when you do a law line adjustment. Now, it is a legal lot of record, but it's a new lot of record because the law line adjustment will render modifications to the deed of that property. And by him modifying the law line, he pretty much created a new law that is unbuildable. Which, so it just add to the level of complexity with regards to the legal use of the land. And again, we're going to RSA that renders me powerless to render a determination of that law. So I cannot make any determination of approval.
So this, but according to the information we have, there is a subdivision, there is a subdivision on record, which she has said they had found. And then underneath that, because of that, I'm reading it, it does say that under the following circumstances, a building permit can be issued.
Except.
Initially.
Dang it, it is on a subdivision.
No, she's quoting the RSA.
On the back, on this.
On the back of page one.
Well, I'm reading the first, the prior subdivision plan was approved by the planning board.
That's one condition.
A condition.
It's a condition of approval. If you, if you find that plan, then that's one way to grant the permit. But what we're saying is that that has not been discovered. And that's why it, item 2B2, a street and a subdivision approved by the planning board, and we don't have that.
No. And like I said, he did acquire a piece of land from the border neighbor, which modified further the law in question.
He made it less noncon, he made it more nonconforming.
More nonconforming.
By adding that piece on there.
Yeah.
We also, we also have to take into consideration that this is not the only application applicant coming before us looking for a waiver on a Class 6 road.
Right.
I think it's going to be, it's going to be, this, read the attached contract here.
Yeah, the waiver that they would have to sign.
Well, if you read it, right, I mean, honestly, we're allowing them to build a house in this town, but now they're going to say that we don't have to respond with fire apparatus and they're releasing them of all liability? That's not going to happen. I don't think I'll put that piece of paper says.
Right.
I just think it's, but if we were to decide to allow the building inspector to issue a permit, it would only be if we got this signed.
And who would sign that?
Who in their right mind would sign?
Who in their right mind would sign that?
Somebody that really wants to build a house.
If they want to build strongly enough, they're going to have to.
That's true.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, not only that, and the fact that it's, it's not that this, this is not a Class 6 road or worse, it's the fact that this is a private road.
It's even worse than being a Class 6.
Exactly.
It's worse because not only is it a private road, but the access is an easement off of that private road.
It's an easement. Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, it's a very complex matter, really complex. And, I mean, yeah, I love to see more, the amount of development that we're taking, keep going in the town, but there are safety and life and safety items are very concerning.
And if this one were to go through, it would indeed open up a Pandora's box.
It would.
Put the town at risk of having to bring every road up to standard that had a house on it.
Exactly. That might even put us into the other subject of the other land that the guy wants to build and access by another town.
That's another even more complicated one.
Yeah, so, so one thing will build after the other. That's, that's, like I said, it's very complex. I mean, I know Mr. McDonough has invested heavily to try to make this right, but.
From what, from what our attorney has given us, it seems the only redeeming factor here and the only thing that she's suggesting we might consider is the fact that there's already a structure there. And so, you know, there might be a reason for moving forward as long as the liability was all waived and so forth and so on, but, I mean, other than that.
Well, not exactly. It says that they can do repairs to the existing structure.
Sure.
You can do that and get permits accordingly.
Yeah, because it's protected within the nonconforming, legal nonconforming status or grandfather in, of the, of the structure. But having that in mind, and yes, there is another property, the intent is also different with regards to this matter because there is a seasonal property in that lot, which wants to become now a year-round property.
That's a whole other body.
So, again, there, like I said, it's layers upon layers. It's not, it's not a simple, yes, I wouldn't have problem issuing a building permit to repair the current structure because it's provided within our zoning ordinances, but for the intent, it's something that has to be deeply researched and proceeded with caution.
So the request to you at the building department is more than just making repairs
Yes.
To the existing structure.
The request is to actually raise the current structure.
Yes.
And build a bigger year-round structure.
Right. Okay.
So what do you need from us?
A decision.
That's a simple question.
Well, I think, I think we uphold the decision of the building inspector.
Yes. Yeah, so that.
Then if he wants to continue it, it falls in his court, if he wants to go to land court or something to try to prove us different.
Yeah.
I feel bad for the gentleman. I know he's gone through a lot of, but it's too bad he hadn't talked to us before he did what he did.
Correct. I'm going to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion that we support the decision of our building inspector and thank him for the work he's put into this because I know it's been a lot of work on this one specific project. And again, it's an unfortunate circumstance that maybe the applicant should have came to the town with intent before he invested all the money that he did, but unfortunately, it's not our issue. And thank you.
You're welcome.
Discussion, comments?
On what Peter said, how do we, what steps can we take to prevent something like this in the future, right? Like, how can we get the homeowners of the landowners or the residents more knowledgeable so that they don't waste their time and money for two years and then it turns out they have property that they can't live on?
I think, I think Laurie, that to be honest with you, I mean, there's going to be at some point, we need to extend the obligation to the investor. We have building codes in this town.
Right.
We have requirements in this town.
Yeah.
We just didn't make them up. And unfortunately, that piece of property doesn't meet any of them. And they probably should have looked into that and said, hey, we, you know, that's a 500 square foot camp on a lake.
Right.
That's been there since the 60s. And I mean, to come in to think that we're just going to blow up a big house on a private road, unfortunately, and do that, when we have these guidelines, he could have came to the building department and like anybody, I think Pedro has actually been working on this for a while because we have multiple places in this town that people want to come
Exactly. Right. So what, what can we do?
Yes, so in that matter.
What can we do?
In that matter, we have taken proactive steps to that. Glenn Greenwood and I started already creating with the, the help of assessing an existing list of how many seasonal properties we have in town.
Right.
And at a later point, we're looking to sit down with the board and discuss what process and position we're going to put in place for either promote or establish what can and cannot be done with those properties. And that is arising out of the need or under the request of many, many, many residents to convert seasonal use to year-round. And Kingston is very unique in this type of matter. And that they're, currently with what we have is, is a very hard decision to make. Or to actually be able to render the possibility or feasibility of a project in any of those circumstances. You got this one that although he makes steps to make it so that although it's nonconforming and became less, more nonconforming, he tried to make it in a manner that he can do his project and, and make it to an extent conforming to certain ordinances. We have other projects that are just impossible.
Well, I mean, just look at this one example. It's, it was, you know, a seasonal that he wanted to convert to, you know, year-round. And it was private road through an easement, like there were six different things, and we had to go to a lawyer to help us figure it out. So to expect a resident to be able to go through all the RSAs and figure it out, so.
But like in building code, at the end of the day, is the responsibility of the homeowner.
I'm not saying it's not, but I, I'm not saying it's not the responsibility of the homeowner, but we can, is there something we can do to educate the homeowner and just, you know, make sure you know the codes or something so that we're not putting residents, they're, they're putting themselves in that position, I understand that, but is there something we can do?
So we are.
To make it less painful when we have to say no?
The first thing is to have the understanding of, of what is the, to call it something, the inventory out there, in the, to talk in the lingo of real estate, what is the inventory out there? Then understand the conditions and having the, the knowledge that Kingston is dependent on their natural resources, how those natural resources are being affected by the change that is being proposed. And, and then take measures and set very specific rules and regulations within the zoning aspect of things because, because one thing is building code. Building code is another thing. Then we're just, we're just focusing this in the land use aspect and the land laws and regulations are, exist. And then you tap into also constitutional rights and things of that nature. So it becomes a really large ball of hair. And I believe that by the town creating very specific parameters that pertain to this development and having the understanding of what's, what is the inventory out there, what are the physical condition of that inventory? And then making a determination of what can be and what cannot be, and if it doesn't fit within the parameters that are created, then it's definitely around no. Or if it's something that can be allowable, then we see the other aspect of the land use and then transition to building code. But first, it's just to have that full understanding, having that framework of what it is out there, what are the characteristics that make this project feasible or not feasible to be performed.
But we can't, we have a hot enough communicating with the normal things, never mind something that's out of the ordinary. And the homeowner has a responsibility to bear and a lot of responsibility. We, we have taken on the responsibility of setting up rules and regulations and ordinances to protect our natural resources in the community, and they've got to do a little homework, too.
Yes, they, they do. I mean, it's, it is each and one of, each and every one of our responsibilities in what we do on our property.
Yeah, I agree.
To know the rules and regs. But, you know, this is kind of a special case and it could be that the planning and zoning department might want to do maybe a public information session, open it up to folks, do a dog and pony show just to talk about it and explain it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that could be done. I, I think if, if we thought about it, there, there are a number of things. I mean, we, if, if we, if we knew which properties were at risk, could put a flag in the property file. Property changes hands, the owner is notified, they see that, you know, any.
And that, that is why I brought to the board a little while ago, the fact that there should be a note on, on the tax card explaining to the Realtor and to the homeowner that whatever is reflected on that tax card does not render to legal use of that property.
Right.
It's an example, there are many properties that may have some sort of living quarters in a, under floor. They, they just assess based on what was there. Doesn't mean that is legal.
Said it was legal, exactly.
Yeah, and, and then I'm invited to that.
It's approved of two apartments and here's three.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of that.
Exactly. And I've been invited to a couple and I, I'm like, yeah, this is not okay. How come? How, how can you say that? I've been taxed for this. I understand you, you might have been tasked, taxed on that end, but this is not what makes this legal use.
All right. We all set? Did we take the vote on this yet?
Yeah. Oh, no, we didn't.
We made the motion. We had the motion and second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, which is to deny the, to uphold our building inspector's decision not to grant a permit? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Pedro. Stay right there.
All right. If the board allowed me to approach also the board with regards to another subject matter?
Well, our next item is a building maintenance reserve.
No.
No, that's not it. We go, go right to your code enforcement update? Is that the one?
Yes.
Yes, we go right there.
So it's 193, I'll go.
Yes.
I'll just pass this around. All right. So I sent an enforcement action letter. I went to the property. I also.
That's, that's not the owner of the property.
Yeah, this isn't the owner of the property.
That's the one that is showing in the, in the card.
That's two owners ago.
Yeah.
I have to go by what is in the card.
Because they are not the owners.
That's a problem.
That's a problem. Because they haven't owned the property for a few years, there was an interim owner and now there's the current owner, which is the issue.
I did send that letter, it's a registered mail letter. Somebody will receive it.
Yeah, but that.
As this has been sent out, I take it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll have to find out who the owners are and do a correct letter.
Yeah, well, I, I look into the.
Well, that card was probably, I'm assuming the card was not updated. The Mastroianni sold it last summer. It's been only, there was no one in between.
There was.
Yes, there was.
They, they just bought this one. The ones that are there now just bought it.
Certified, yep.
This is the second owner.
Yes.
That's living there from Mr. Mastroianni.
But the certification should have come back because they're not there, they're not there to sign for it.
No, but they could, they could have delivered it on Church Street because that's where he's living.
But so what wasn't correct? What did, where did you get the owner information?
From the Avatar.
From Avatar?
Yeah.
That's, that's a problem.
That is a problem.
Yeah. And, but I, I also communicated with them via phone because they have a phone number on the webpage.
The one that's advertising for events that they're legally able to have.
Yeah. I'm not too, 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 a fan of getting into social media because I don't have any, but I enrolled myself into Instagram. I saw a couple of contact information, I called them, I spoke with one of them. I explained to them the situation. Also, they have videos doing some renovation that requires permit. So that's why they have the two violations there. I explained that to them. There are items that seems to be very unsafe, one of them being a bedroom on a loft that doesn't have proper guard railing and things of that nature and lack of smoke detectors. So I already explained that to them verbally and I told them that I was going to follow up with a letter, which is that letter that you have in your hands, but I sent it to the, the owner of record that I was able to capture.
So we got to get that.
So, yeah, I will try to, if, I'll tomorrow research further the card to see if I can find the name of the LOC. And I will just modify that letter anyways. I also set up the letter in the street file that I created when I first started, that we didn't have a system. And all the records are being kept digitally as well.
Okay.
So that they can be some follow-up on that.
Okay, Pedro, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Have you actually spoken with the folks at the property?
The gentleman. I have his name on my, on my desk. I spoke with the gentleman that, that is in the video showing the, the paintwork and some of the construction work.
Is he the owner?
He's one of the owners.
He's one of the owners.
He owns it with his wife, he said.
Okay. So you, you have at least spoken with one of the current owners?
Yes.
So this needs to be reissued to them?
Yeah.
Just to make sure that we're all.
Yeah, we understand that, yeah. Mastroianni's can't do this.
Well, if I, if I got this by certified mail and I saw it didn't have my name on it, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be signing for it.
Be in the trash.
Right, well, I'm with that.
That's why I'm surprised that the certified hasn't come back.
And maybe it has, maybe it will because it takes three times before.
Well, that's true, it's never.
It's, it's not one try and then it comes back. So they have three attempts to try and deliver it. So anyways, we know you'll take care of it, get the right owner's name on it and send this back out.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Thank you, Pedro.
Thank you.
This is going to be another tough one.
Sorry?
This is going to be another tough one.
Yes.
Yeah, we could see that already. Thank you very much for your work.
Walk slowly.
All right, thank you. All right, item second was the building maintenance reserve fund expenditures regarding how to pay for the Nichols Library door, building door. And Mr. Ernie, Mr. Landry, would you come, do you want to come forward and state your case, I guess is the right phrase to use? The item we're talking about is the building maintenance reserve fund expenditures for the, for the Nichols Building door.
Oh, for the Nichols Building?
Right.
Oh, okay, I didn't, didn't know.
I'm sorry, I was not clear, I apologize.
What, the agenda?
He didn't know it was on the agenda.
Oh, you didn't know? Oh, okay, so that's why you were here, but you're getting to be like Rick, right?
I'm just here to get an idea of municipal government, that's all.
Okay, that sounds good.
So.
Go for it.
We, we were presented with three or four items that the Heritage Commission had recommended for maintenance work on the Nichols Building. At a previous meeting, we approved $12,200, I believe, from the building, for the building capital reserve, building maintenance fund, whatever the name of it is, for the repair of the roof over the door.
Repair the roof, yeah.
Yeah.
What?
Repair the roof, right?
Yes. That's what I said, yes?
Yes.
And there are still some outstanding items that we don't know, we, we hadn't made a decision on how we were going to move forward with those. There was, there was the repair of the front door. I believe there was a request for a new flagpole.
And miscellaneous.
And there was a miscellaneous item, so there were three things. I still don't have a clear understanding of what that, and I think it was 5,000. I still don't have a clear understanding of what that, and I think it was $5,000 worth of miscellaneous, I guess I'm not sure what's in that. I think you had put a number of $9,000 for the door. Do we know if that's a good number or not? Okay?
It's, I don't think it's a good number, I think it's much lower than that, actually, at this point.
Much lower?
I think it's lower.
How much lower?
How much lower?
Yeah.
Could be $5,000 lower, maybe even a little bit more than that. What, we've got preliminary bids from, at least one person. We're still looking to get two bids to make it, you know, a proper procurement, but at this point, one of the bids that we have now is, is fairly low.
Okay, could, could, could you give us a little more information on what's in the, in that miscellaneous number?
Yeah, that was a contingency, I think, I think we can just dispense with the contingency on that.
Okay, all right. So at this point, I'm hearing that we're really talking about the door.
The door.
Okay.
And only the door.
Okay, yeah, so.
And the flagpole, if that's still an issue.
It is. I'd rather do the door and be done.
Sure, get, get an updated price on the door as soon as we can, and so we can make a decision on that.
Yeah, if we can, if we can get a good number, a good quote, or quotes for the door repair, then we can, then we can, we can deal with that. And my preference would be to, you know, at this point, to use the same source of funds that we use to prepare the roof.
Yep, I'd go with that, but only, but.
Once we've got.
Just the door.
Once we've got a good number to work with.
Why not flagpole? Is it a, is it freestanding?
Because you can find ways for the flagpole.
Is it a freestanding flagpole, or one attached to the building?
No, it's a freestanding.
Okay.
It is. It's about a $250 item, I looked it up online. And someone would have to install it.
Okay.
I'm assuming DPW could probably do that.
Right.
It's not a big deal.
Right.
I mean, we could take, we could pass the hat at the table, I suppose, but it's not a big number. And it is a town building, most of our other town buildings, if not all of them, do have flagpoles. I don't see why that one shouldn't have a serviceable one as well. It has one, it has one now, but apparently it's not, it's not in good shape, Ernie.
Right. There's been nothing on that building that's in good shape, unfortunately. Anyways, any other comments? We just wait until you get us the right numbers for the door, we need to have that in order to move forward.
Ernie, I could, I don't know if you have somebody already lined up for another quote for that front door, but I could recommend somebody for you. I could rebuild that door for you.
Okay.
So I could, right here in town. So, I can give that to. If you want somebody else to look at the door.
It'll help you get another quote.
Ernie, do you, do you need another source for?
Right, we, we can, sure.
Okay.
Yes, the answer is yes.
More than Eric, actually.
Thank you Peter. We're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item was contracts, when the finance, can, when can the financier be authorized to sign in lieu of a select board on a contract? And I believe it's, that's the case when we've approved the contract, although we haven't signed it, that we should authorize the finance director to be able to sign on our behalf for approved contracts. They all should be going to finance director before we get them anyways. And I believe that's the procedure that has been established, so the contracts should go to Mrs. Mahoney and have, for her review before they come to us for our signature. If for some reason we didn't sign it, she has the authority, assuming we approved it, only approved contracts by the board can be signed by the fire, finance director.
Would you need to authorize her to sign on an individual basis, like they authorize you to sign? It just seems like there should be some authorization on it, case by case.
No, I hear what you're saying. So if, if we follow the procedure that we put in place, that every contract that comes to the town, it's supposed to be reviewed by finance?
Yes.
And then it comes to us for us to sign off on?
Correct.
Right, if we forget to actually sign the contract part, but we've approved the contract, then the finance director can sign for us.
On behalf of the board.
On behalf of us, because we've already reviewed it.
Correct.
Correct, okay. That makes sense, because the reason this was brought up, there was that, there was a PO, and it was for the roof for the museum, is that right Paula? And we had signed the PO, but it was the, was it the quote? It was something that we, we got changed from Ernie's name to the town, and then because we had already signed the PO, the question was, can Paula just sign that new of us? So that was why this was raised, but it is just a general question of when can that happen, but.
By the same token, we get purchase orders that are not signed by a department head, and we have in the past signed off on them.
Right.
And we should have two signatures, and, and I'm, and I'm guilty of that as well. I've seen Paula's signature on it, but not necessarily the department head's signature.
Right.
And I have signed off, so we, we really shouldn't sign off until those two signatures are on that PO.
Right.
Or, or a call in to Susan saying that I can't get there to sign as a department head.
Right.
And therefore, they need to get in here to sign it.
So when we get, Marty just said this, but I kinda lost you in that conversation, I'm sorry. So, when we get something that we just talked about, it goes to finance first for review?
Correct.
Before it comes to us?
Correct.
So, when we get that in front of us, that is gonna have Paula's signature on it, and she's already looked at it. We should know that it's gone to her.
Yes, for a contract.
Correct.
Yes, not a PO for a contract.
For a contract.
Yeah, correct.
So that's gonna let us know as a board, that she's already reviewed it and she's aware of it?
Right, yes. The thing is, we have to get better at doing that, because we don't always do it. And regardless of the contract, we need to do it, because then Paula has eyes on it to be able to budget for it, and then we've all had eyes on it to make sure we're okay with it. And then sometimes it's not the actual final contract, right? It might be that something, I don't know why we wouldn't be signing it if we've reviewed it, like have our signature, but in the case we don't.
Well, sometimes we have done that, and we shouldn't, it's not part of our procedure, we should be reviewed by finance.
Yep.
Come to the board.
Yep.
Adopted by the board, hopefully signed off on it, and if not.
Hopefully, right.
Because sometimes we miss it, we usually pile.
Yep.
But if not, that, that the finance director has the authority to sign on our behalf.
So that would be the only time, not, not just.
No, no, we have to have approved it, or it doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah, right, no, I agree, I agree. But we just have to get better at doing that all of the time.
But I brought up the purchase orders, cause we're also, we miss and not follow the procedure on that, so, exactly, okay? So we're good. Everybody good on that one? All right, so the next item, not clear?
I was answering a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. The status of the Center for Occupational Employee Health status, and I believe Paula's working on that with both police and fire and highway? Come on down.
I was working on it for a while. We're waiting for a few things from Portsmouth Hospital, Portsmouth Occupational Health, but Portsmouth Hospital, and, and what they do is, they don't do the drug testing part, but they use onsite, it's onsite words after it, I don't remember what it's called, but they come, they use them to have us all be complied with the foreign motor, the laws for DOT and stuff. So they'll come here whenever they, we need to do a drug testing.
So Portsmouth subcontracts to this mobile service? Okay.
They're, they're all like used together.
Yeah.
Whereas Exeter had it all onsite with them, but.
Right, this is a result of the fact that Exeter Hospital will no longer, no longer provide physicals and testing.
Correct.
Appropriate for new police and fire and/or department transportation.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for some pricing from them, but.
Okay, so that's, so we need to get that going, well, you're waiting for them to respond so you can budget accordingly.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, well, I have a question. Do we have, I know that you're waiting on them, but I know that in the emails from the Exeter, they, they weren't gonna accept any more appointments after November 27th, or something for drug testing, so what are we gonna do after that? If we're, I mean, what do we, what's our plan?
Will be all set before then, but I've already gotten from, we get it monthly from the, I guess it's Exeter, that says who needs to be tested, so we're all set for this month anyway.
For November?
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Question Paula, the switch from what we're current, what we have been doing to this new process, does it change our budgeting? Do we have to budget differently for this than we did before?
Not, no, because we always had plenty of money, because we never know when they're gonna have to get a physical or, or drug testing. So I always budgeted enough money for that.
So we budget for paying for that service already?
Mm-hmm.
It's just gonna be done by a different group?
The, the new vendor.
Yeah.
A new vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that issue? Okay, under, first item, a new business, and it's a cemetery sexton replacement, and designated the New Hampshire Cemetery Association, and I'll ask Mr. John Pranberg, the chairman of the Board of Trustees, to come forward and welcome.
So, back at the last.
It needs to be green.
Last Budget Committee meeting, we got, talking about the cemetery and the trustees and the, for lack of a better word, billing back and forth from the trustees to the Highway Department. And everything is, is running, it's been fine, but I think we, we need to come up with a, the trustees are gonna come up with a better plan for that, so, and we had been, they had been talking about, we need to get, we need to get a sexton appointed. And before I digress, John, this information that you saw on the agenda, New Hampshire Cemetery Association?
Yes.
I don't know if you saw that, but Susan sent us a copy of that in the packet.
Okay.
And what they're suggesting is, please be advised, if you'd like to have, like to have as a New Hampshire CA member for the remainder of 2024, now that Phil is no longer working for your town, perhaps one of the cemetery trustees, all that we need is a name and an email address. So, to cover for that, my suggestion would be to recommend that John temporarily cover as the sexton, so that this information is dealt with with the state.
That's a, that's a separate item.
Those are separate things, John.
All right, so he would be a member of the New Hampshire Cemetery Association?
He would be our contact person, that's what they need to designate.
Yeah, it's just a POC with a.
And that's military speak for person of contact?
Point of contact, I'm sorry, yes.
So, anyway, and I asked Susan to put this on the agenda and I had asked John to come in to kind of give us, he gave me a little bit of an overview myself today, but an overview of what he's thinking on what we wanna do with the sexton person, and maybe how we're, if in fact, depending on how or whom is appointed, how it would be paid for, and then a little bit of information about the money being billed from the Highway Department to the trustees, and then the trustees in turn actually sending a check out, or back into the fund. So, I think that, for budgeting purposes, we need to have those numbers correct, and then secondary, they need to appoint a sexton, so.
Okay.
Cards.
Let me just try to crisply explain some of the history of how we got to where we got. So, we used to have what I think is probably in New Hampshire, although I don't wanna overstate, cause I've only done this for four or five years, but the traditional situation is you have a sexton, and then you have landscaping taken care of, and.
Is that the primary duty of the sexton, is to take care of the landscaping?
No. He would oversee that.
Oversee.
The primary is to do everything else but that, but, you know, oversee burials, interact with families.
Okay.
Funeral directors, people who wanna purchase lots, there's a lot that, that goes on up there that I, that I will get it, get into with you. But Phil served as a sexton, and pride of being employed full time by the town, he was paid $9,000 bucks a year to do that duty.
Okay.
When I first came on, and Brad isn't here, but for years, we had struggled with what I, for lack of a better word, I'm gonna call it landscaping, the ongoing care of the cemeteries. And we, we employed outside landscapers, the last landscaper was from Northern Essex County, Massachusetts. The bill that last year, the last couple of years ran $18,000 to $22,000 for that landscaping, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, I just wanna keep up with you.
Please.
Is this for all the cemeteries or what?
Yes, all of them.
All of them?
All of them.
$18,000?
I think I may know where you're going, if, at the end you're gonna.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, that, that was all of them. In my opinion, it was a mediocre job at best. The, the nature of landscaping is that this isn't their only job, the warm weather, it's a very busy time of year for them, they don't have offices, secretaries, managers and office staffs that are responsive to phone calls, and it was a frustration. I mean, one of the frustrations was, you know, getting bills out of them, you know, we'd agree to a, to a contract amount, and we're in a fiscal year, and they're kind of on their seasonal year, and, you know, they look, they really looked upon our money as something to tide, you know, they bill at the end of the year and tide them over, and we need that bill as quick as we can get it. It was a real hassle. Most important thing is the work was mediocre, and the communication was, was not good at all. And this just evolved that, coincidentally, when the sexton completely separately moved to your highway job, he saw, you know, I, I think an opportunity to do this better. And I don't know, as he knew, how economically advantageous it would be to the trustees and the town, but it turned out being so. So that we've evolved to a situation now where the real estate taxpayer, we raise an appropriate $18,000 a year from them for the care of the cemeteries. Phil hasn't drawn a stipend as sexton, so what was running close to $30,000 a year is now reduced down to $18,000. And a lot of the other work, which I, there's a lot of paperwork and bureaucracy that's involved with a sexton's job, I think he just very logically and naturally brought that with you in the department of public works. And his administrative assistant really took the ball and ran with that, and took over a lot of those duties from him, bit by bit and gradually. So where we are with that is that everything is now computerized. We've got outside software and vendors that, that we've contracted with, and all of the paperwork, including historical paperwork, has been scanned into the database in an organized and orderly way. Equally as important, the mapping is now in a database. All of the relevant records that are in the clerk's office have gradually also been scanned into and integrated into that database. All of this is publicly available, because they are public records, and they're a tremendous resource to the public. Greenwood Cemetery is now completely mapped. The others are gradually being done and scanned up in, in there. All of the deeds are scanned in, but they're in the process of being organized, and there's also transcription errors that take place and could be corrected. That's all been slowly going on. We'd like for that to continue. In terms of the finances, which I, which I know that particularly, the other aspect of finances is there, is that there is income, reimbursements that are available to the town, they're from two sources. One is a trust established by the Bartlett family a long time ago, that's administered by either the Bank of America or Mellon Bank, I, I don't know who it is. The trustees have nothing to do with that at all, you know, those, we employ Cambridge The trustees have nothing to do with that at all, you know, those, we employ Cambridge Trust to manage the town's money. So this is separate from that, this is the Bartlett family money that's managed out of New York. And they pay for mill stream. In addition to which, so, and we basically, and they've agreed that they'll do this, we basically take a quarter of all of those, all of the cemetery expenses and we build that trust. They add on gratuitously ten percent to the town, basically to the trustees for overhead.
Administration, yeah.
We, we don't take that, that goes.
The town.
To the town. So you, you'll get that money, that'll be done in the next few weeks. And that, that money usually comes in somewhere between Christmas and Dr. King's birthday, right around there. The check will be cut at the end of the year, but it may not make it to the town until January. There's also perpetual care money that is in the possession of the trustees and, and is managed by Cambridge Trust and Bank of America. You, you will, you always will get the income from that. Last year, that income was sixty-seven hundred dollars. That, there will be more money there this year, just by virtue of interest rates rising. So that, that will, but that's gonna go up and down.
That will fluctuate.
With the markets and the economy. So you've gotten almost, so of, of that eighteen grand, you get thirteen thou, the taxpayer gets thirteen thousand dollars back. Go ahead, Mr. Carter.
And that perpetual care money comes when someone purchases a plot?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So as more, more plots are purchased, that fund gets more principal put into it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I gotta direct you, that big thing is when you can't get but one percent in interest. That's why that might, that's why that's down so much.
Right.
The other thing, which I don't wanna get into here, but I argue what Cambridge Trust about is you don't wanna be buying ten and twenty-year bonds that are only paying one or two percent. You, 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 so we gotta wait for those bonds to mature. Before we can put them out at four and five percent. That, that's a separate issue. So, right now, you've been, you know, we've gone down from nearly thirty, down to eighteen and, and we pay about two, we reimburse, we find about two-thirds of that. So there are really two issues. The Muslim, the other issue is, right now, there's no sexton. So there are documents that have to be signed for funeral directors and for, for, you know, for, to do with the proper care of bodies. So I, the, Lisa's called me and I've suggested, look, for what? Ask, tell, you know, be very candid, we don't have a sexton right now. Can the chairman of the board sign him as the chairman of the cemetery trustees? For, for a brief interim time? And I, you know, I'm pretty sure that that will be all right, you know? But we really need to fill that job.
Is that appointed or elected?
Pointed by.
The trustees?
We voted, it's.
Okay, oh.
You mean, it's not elected by the people and it, and it's not, it's clearly in the purview of the cemetery trustees.
Right, as opposed to being elected in March, that's where I was going with that. No, it's not, the trustees appoint the sexton.
Right.
Okay.
Does a sexton have to be a Kingston resident?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, how do I prove a negative? I've never seen that, that's the first that's been raised with me. What, behind me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, they probably, that's interesting, I was someone. So, it's.
Anyways.
Yep. So, I, you know, I've talked, the trustees clear when we're gonna go in a particular direction. We think we're moving in the right direction now. The, Tom has indicated that he's willing to, to continue to do what I call a landscape and for back, lack of a, of a better word. And he is confident, because he's been an integral part of doing that.
Right, correct.
So he knows exactly what we're getting into there. But I, I assume you're not gonna be surprised when I talk to Tom about these other duties, his eyes glaze over, right? He's not interested in that at all. So. You know, we, you know, I, I think that the logic thing to do is to appoint the person who's doing all of the work now to that job.
Well, that's, that's, that's for your, for the trustees to do, yes?
It is, but to be candid with you, you know, I, based on my, and I won't go into it, I've got a lot of experiences on another planet about local government. And just because the trustees have the right and the power to do something, there are higher elected officials that at least ought to be consulted. I prefer that this be your idea. Right?
Well, it kind of is in some way because you have a person that's a full-time employee of the town that's also doing this, you know? I, I guess, how does that work? I mean, this is a very competent individual. I, I totally understand your desire to go in that direction, totally get that. But it raises some potential conflicts.
Such as?
Such as, would the sexton be the one submitting bills and signing the checks?
No. What, what checks you, what checks you're talking about?
I, I don't.
She's signing, she's signing no checks, what checks are you?
I, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, I, I don't know. I'm assuming that there might be expenses, they just, do they flow to the town?
Yes. I can't think of, there is a checkbook with the trustees, but that checkbook is frankly for the office behind me over here on the right. We, in other words, all, all monies, we authorize indirect expenditures of monies, but they're dispersed by the town.
Okay.
Did, did we not have a town employee previously as the sexton?
I don't know.
Yes, Phil.
Oh, I know, Phil was, yes, absolutely, and we knew that, I knew that. And that's, that's not where, I'm, I'm concerned because, well, Phil, Phil was salary exempt. Are we paying overtime, time and a half?
So this is my suggestion, because there's a, there's a legal, you're, you're hitting around at a, at a legal problem that has nothing to do with money, that I see being issued.
I just don't want a conflict of interest that's inappropriate, that's where I'm concerned.
Right, so, so, so the other thing is that, that there should be a sexton.
Yep.
Who is clearly answers to the cemetery trustees in the discharge of those duties. Period.
Okay.
I think it's a great advantage to the public and to the rest of the town to coincidentally have that person kind of available forty hours a week to, to set aside her work for five minutes and talk to a family member or funeral director. You know, she, she has come to evening meetings for a couple of years now and not gotten any extra compensation. So what I would suggest is that we're spending eighteen thousand dollars now, which is, in my opinion, a bug. I'm not suggesting to increase the eighteen thousand, but maybe set aside fifteen for landscaping, three for a stipend for the, for the sexton. And let's do, move forward on that basis for twenty twenty-five and see how it works.
How do we decipher as a board of the town, if she works forty hours a week, how do we decipher what she's working for the town and what she's working for the cemetery? How do we, how do we know that? She's, she's, she, her obligation of the town is to work for the highway department.
Right.
And now she's taken on another responsibility that, that monetary figure will, the town's paying for that, but she was hired to do a position down there, now, now we're adding something on the plate, so now, what do you?
I'm not adding it on the plate, it's been on that plate for a couple of years now.
Since Phil, since Phil took it over, because he came into it as a sexton and I don't know if the board ever discussed about it back then.
And he's had his assistant help him in the duties, that's what's happened.
The board was, everybody was.
No, I'm, I'm asking, it's not.
Yeah, no, everybody was aware that, and I think the focus at that point was the, the potential advantages we saw of, of getting work done in the cemeteries themselves. And that's where it felt, both in terms of quality of work and the economics of the town, to great advantage. So we don't wanna upset that. So that, that would remain the same. And so it, I, I think, having that person there, there is gonna be time outside of the, whatever the hours are, eight to four or nine to five or seven to three, whatever the hours are.
Six to two.
She's gonna be working outside of that time, meeting with families and also coming to our meetings regularly.
But, but it, wouldn't that be overtime?
No.
Covered by the stipend?
That's the stipend. I mean, in a certain way, you, you can like.
Not, not her salary, not her wage overtime.
She's not a salary, she's an hourly employee.
Right, her, right.
So anything over forty hours is time and a half?
If she's doing DPW, but what, I think what John is saying is if it's cemetery stuff, that's the stipend that he recommended.
And how is that monitored?
How is what monitored? Exactly, you mean her, I mean, I know.
Right, I, I just wanna, wanna be, I don't mind paying a stipend, but I don't wanna pay a stipend in overtime.
Well, there's no overtime.
There's no overtime, Ellie.
You're, okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna say anything else.
Yeah, I don't know anything about overtime, I don't say that it exists or it doesn't exist. I just know that there's a job that's gotta be done, I know that she's been doing it for no extra money.
And has done it well, I mean, there's no question about that.
Right.
I, I, I think, yes, that part of it would be the honesty system, what, what else can we do? We don't know, we're not there.
Right.
Tom would obviously know what's going on with it that, you know, would have to let her know, don't, unless somebody walks in the door, she needs to look something up, but.
Right, and it's no big deal.
Doing the deeds and doing the other stuff that requires it, she would be doing on her own time.
I'm very sensitive and aware that I don't want any of this to become a challenge or a distraction for your new highway guy.
And, and nor.
That's the one thing that's like foremost in the back of my mind.
Right, nor should it, I, I don't think anyone's looking to give you that.
No, and I, I think, I'm quite, I, he's comfortable with, with what I'm proposing, I'm sure.
Okay.
So, John, are you proposing, it sounded like you were proposing this as a, a trial for a certain period of time? See how it works?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I think Chuck reasonably is focused on the budget and I'm thinking, all right, we got it, the budget, we're locked in for a year, it's, you know, we don't have the flexibility that you have in a city or, or in a business. We gotta figure this out in the next several weeks for next year. Let's do it, do it for next year. And be done with it, and, and I, I don't, I don't mind signing this stuff on behalf of the sexton for a while, but let's just get this out of the way.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'd certainly be in support of doing it for this next year.
So, I, I guess, John, if you could talk to the parties to be, to run it by them to see if they're interested in, in the program.
I discussed everything but money with this individual. She's never raised money, I never raised money. But as I thought this out, I should just, you know, it should be a modest stipend, right?
So you need, you would have to explain that the, the stipend and the work isn't going to be done during the day like it is now. You would need to understand that. The work she's doing right now, she's doing it while she's sitting there at the DPW for, as this DPW administrator.
Right.
Under this new system.
I'd assume Tom would, would, like, would figure that out.
I'm just saying, you need to explain that to her before we can make a decision, that she understands that that's the way it's going to be. Because you said you'd talk to her, but not without money.
I haven't, it's.
Chuck, I don't understand what you're trying to say. That she's sitting there during her eight hours where, that she's been already doing sexton work.
Correct.
She continues, she can continue to do that.
And what I'm saying is that he, she needs to understand that if it's the new role, that she's going to get a stipend.
Right.
That work can't be done during the eight-hour shift. And, and, and he had, John just said he's talked to her about wanting to be the sexton, but not with the money part of it, or the fact is that.
So no cemetery work would be done during her eight hours?
Correct.
What, so what if a family member is not?
That's not, that's not, that's not logistical.
There's a chapter to the rule, if somebody walks into the door and they send, send them down there to do that.
Or phone calls or burials during the day, or, I mean, the, the way it's been done, okay. Okay.
Sausage meal, but creating a problem doesn't exist, so we can solve it.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
No, I, I, honestly, like I just said three minutes ago, I don't wanna distract Tom, but ultimately, Tom's pursuit is gonna be, the DPW director will organize her time.
Sounds like to me, John, I hate to interrupt you, but it sounds like to me, we should've had John here tonight or when John's available, he's in, he's in, just 'cause he, Tom, I'm sorry, Tom. Tom here available during this discussion. Unfortunately, he's probably with his wife right now. So I think maybe we're gonna continue this talk of what his employees are gonna be doing that's working directly under him. We should probably have him here for this conversation.
We can wait one more week.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can wait another week.
I think, I think we should have Tom's input, just, 'cause he, you know, we're make, we're here, we are making decisions and I think it's best if Tom is here with this conversation, to be honest with you.
We, we, we're not looking to do.
We're not, we're not, we, we wanna get it taken care of, we really do, but I think Tom, we should get his input and just kinda.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's probably the best thing to do.
I don't even need to be here, I mean, if you want me here, I'll be here, but I would say just talk to him.
That's, I think, and he'll, he'll end that, he'll end that quickly, the conversation, I'm sure he'll answer some questions that he's got down there, I mean, he's got a lot on his plate right now.
Right.
So I think, I think we probably should just have a little conversation with Tom. But I, I, I think we agree with your decision, we just gotta work out some of the formalities.
I mean, I don't even, you understand, what I clear that, all five of you understand what, why I'm suggesting what I'm suggesting.
Correct, absolutely.
And it makes sense, there's not even a question about it.
That's our question.
But there's some logistical things, it'd be nice to talk to Tom about it, to get his input, I think, as well, and that would work.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight, really appreciate it, John. Let's see, item next, it's you, Mr. Chuck.
It is, and I think.
Police details, the budget for the police details.
Joel was not here, which revolves around him, so I don't know if he ever looked at the agenda or got a note from Susan that it was on the agenda. Because it's a reference to details of what we talked about the last meeting. Details for people having conscience on the planes, et cetera, and the detail rate. And we kind of, we've got two or three departments that are now budgeting some significant money for a police detail.
Yeah.
And the budget committee is not quite sure why they're having to do that. Although it was explained to them why, but, anyway, so I think maybe we put that off till the next meeting. Joel is here.
Yeah, if we could do that on our, that Monday meeting, the last.
The department head meeting.
Yes, department head meeting, yeah.
It's just, again, for budgeting purposes.
Yes.
It's two weeks.
Two weeks.
That way he'll be here, so we can answer him, him, directly to him, too, as well.
That's right.
Yeah.
This is Diane, our budget chair.
So I think there was some concern of where the budgeting is. And I, are you talking about pushing it off until the department head meeting?
Yes.
Because Joel will be presenting his budget on the twentieth. And so if the discussion kind of went around, should we be putting it in individual departments or should it be going into the police budget? So, there, this kind of surrounded the museum, putting in fifty-five hundred dollars for details for their potential events for next year.
And recreation has money in there.
And recreation has money in there for Halloween and certainly.
And that's because after what happened this year in several instances, these various groups were told that they needed to budget for detail. So they're doing that.
Yes, at the direction of the select.
At the direction of the select board.
Yes.
So, the question came up, is, is the museum having the whatever event? Or is it the Friends of the Museum? Because if the Friends of the Museum are having it versus the actual museum, that's different. Because we have other associations that are having events that are paying for details outside of having taxpayer money pay for details. And it comes out of their profits. So that was kind of a question that we kind of tossed around budget committee of. Because, because if it's, and we're just looking for some guidance, because if it's okay for the museum, then it's okay for the library, it's okay for the fire department, it's okay for other people to budget for fundraising events.
But the pros, but the, the difference between, let's say, well, here I am picking on the museum again, or it seems to.
We all do.
Right, I'm supposed to do that, right? The Friends is a private organization, so if they're sponsoring an event, that's part of their cost, not to the town, but to the Friends, and they keep all the proceeds. If it's the museum sponsoring the event, the proceeds benefit the town.
And go back to the general.
And go back to the general fund, so, in which case, they wouldn't necessarily, they could still vote, pay for the detail. My own reasoning says, yes, they both budget for detail, but one, the, the museum, where the, the funds come to the town to benefit the town and it's in support of the museum versus the Friends, they don't have to be accountable to the town at all. Their, whatever money they raise for the events that they sponsor, they keep the proceeds. They still pay for the detail and keep the proceeds for their, as does the Brew Fest for the Associate Fire Association, for example. Am I correct in that, chief? Am I correct in that, Chief?
Yes. But while the chief is coming up, go, come on up. And I don't know if he's gonna back up what I'm gonna say, but the nonprofit associations, like the Friends of the Museum.
Yeah.
The money that they raise, and I can't swear that all of it goes there, but they're raising money on behalf of the museum, and they're spending it for programming or for improvements or whatever. So it's just, it's a fundraising arm for that, but anyway.
But then we're not gonna agree on that. We agree on that to some extent, but for me, if you have the expense, then you have the profit. And the town shouldn't have the expense and not benefit from the profit. That's where I differ with you on that one. Okay, Chief.
So, I guess, before I get into my departmental speech, so you are correct that the, like, the fire association, their sole purpose is to support the fire department. I guess as a taxpayer, my problem is, is that you aren't the fiduciary agents of the money that we raise. So we could throw a party, we could, any number of things that would not be okay with the taxpayers in this town. So, the Kingston rec, most of their events are free, and whatever money he does collect goes into the general fund, which makes you guys looking at every P.O. and every expenditure through the town. Kingston Days, the money that's raised for Kingston Days is also put into the general fund or into the Kingston Days Fund, which, again, you guys are the fiduciary agents to expend. So, although I can say that 100%, I can tell you honestly right now that 100% of the funds that we raise for the fire department do not support the fire department. Now, with that being said, we sponsor an appreciation dinner every year, where we support our members for all their hard work. And we did just receive that $30,000 side-by-side, which we actually put the brush unit in today because of the high winds. So that will be presented to the board in the next couple of weeks. But, so the majority of the funds are spent to support the fire department and the residents of the town, but I don't think anybody can say 100%. So as a taxpayer, that's my concern. If it is the board's wish, then you may have some negative feedback that a taxpayer at 172 Main Street is paying for a detail for Brew Fest that the private organization is sponsoring on the planes. That's my concern.
So I think the rec department has a revolving fund, so, but the museum doesn't. So they can't, they can't do anything. They only, if they were to raise any money, they don't have any mechanism to then pay for anything. So everything has to be budgeted for the museum.
But it goes to the Select Board, even from the revolving fund, comes here for approval.
The rec, and in this case, the rec department does its own fundraising. It's, is it, I don't think it's a separate group that does fundraising on their behalf. So, I mean, we, you know, we have the fire association that, as a separate entity that raises money for the fire department. We've got the Friends of the Museum that raise money primarily for, to support the museum. And I don't know if there are others like that.
Friends of the library.
Oh, the library, that's right.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, okay.
And those 501(c)(3) is the property, so. Friends of the library, friends of the museum, those two are.
And the other example that we have is they're having a ceremony for the Bartlett Cemetery in the spring. Now, again, it's a particular town thing. Whether it's required to have a policeman and a fireman, who knows at this point? But there's no parking, there's no nothing, so chances are, you know, and there won't be a lot of people there, but the parking will be along the road, et cetera. If the chief requires a policeman, we, as the selectmen in our budget, have to budget for that, even though it's within the town and it's one, you know, one hand to the other. So, that was, that came up again as to how that's going to be funded for a policeman or an animal.
I thought Heritage put money in, no, they didn't, okay.
That's actually another topic, I think it's supposed to be at next week's meeting to talk about how to, how to budget for the celebration of the next, of the cemetery. Because it's no, it's not in anyone's budget right now. And it needs, if we're going to have a celebration, it needs to be in the budget and where it goes.
And it shouldn't, I mean, it absolutely shouldn't. To me, it goes into the Heritage, or, under the Heritage Commission. And you know it's a one-time expense, but it should be in the budget, it should be approved accordingly. Because that is important to do that.
So it's really kind of cleaning it up, but isn't it a matter of the for or against? It's a matter of, does the museum do it, or does the town do it?
It's gotta be, expenses have to be covered somewhere.
The other factor is we have to find out exactly from the chief, you know, is it a detail rate? Is it an overtime rate? I can't remember what they set. I mean, it should be the-
It's a detail rate.
But it shouldn't be detailed, to my opinion. Why are you paying $60 an hour for a detail rate when if it's overtime, it wouldn't be that much? So, I mean, again, that's things that, that's my opinion, that's things that need to be discussed.
Detail rate covers the vehicle and-
Well, they don't-
No, there's an extra cost for the vehicle.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I just-
Ah, but, yeah, finance directly comes forward. Because those are separate expenses, the hourly rate, administrator's rate, the total rate.
Just to solidify what, I have my own thing, but what rate do we wanna charge? What is the town gonna charge for, whether it's a private party, on the planes, on the town thing? You know, if it's Horizon, it's different.
So it is up to the police and fire chiefs to decide when a detail is required, based on how many people, when they do put in an application for an event. And it is up to the police and fire chief to decide if they wanna charge a vehicle fee or not. Sometimes the police chief has waived the vehicle fee for the detail for a certain event if they don't need a vehicle at all.
Yeah.
And what was decided last year before Kingston Days was created and when the museum was doing their Heritage Day, was that not-for-profits pay for the details themselves. Town-sponsored events go into the budget.
Into the chief's budget?
Nope, into the department.
Oh, the appropriate department.
So, the town clerk for elections has a detail. The rec department has a detail. And Kingston Days budgets for a detail, when they, not in their own budget, but they pay, they get charged. I know that the fire association gets billed for details, and the Friends of the Library get billed for details. And so the Friends of the Museum would-
Friends would also be charged.
Be billed for a detail separate, because the town is not sponsoring the events that those organizations are running. And so therefore, the town's not receiving the funds from those events.
So, just in closing for me, and I just want you guys and everybody else to understand that I'm not gonna speak for Chief Johnson, but before every facilities use permit comes to us, Joel and, Chief Johnson and I meet, and usually the DPW director as well, to see what potential hazards and resources we would need. So it's not just, hey, because you're a certain group that I don't agree with, whatever, we're gonna force you to get details. So, like, for the police chief, it's traffic, security. For fire, it's life safety. I take into account the weather, the participants' age group. You know, there's a lot of stuff that, because we don't have extra first responders on from my department or the police department or whatever, you know, we take all that into consideration. So it's, again, it's not, we don't just flip a coin to try to figure it out.
So the bottom line is, the museum needs to budget, the Heritage Commission needs to budget accordingly for the details.
Yes, the Heritage would have to put in their budget for their event.
Yeah.
The museum, if the museum is running the event, that means the funds that they receive go into the general fund. If the Friends of the Museum are running the event, then they pay the detail themselves.
And the funds is theirs.
And the funds are theirs.
It's not an issue, not our control. Does that help clarify for budget purposes, Miss Diane? It's not?
Yes, if we stick to that and that everyone's good, that if the event is not sponsored or if the funds are not going back to the town, then that organization would need to pay for the details outside of their budget. Okay.
Is it pretty clear?
And, can I just wanna make sure, I just wanna go back to the Heritage Commission and the celebration for the cemetery, because that was an issue that was supposed to be on the agenda for next week, but I think we answered it, so I just wanna make sure. So from what I understand, then the Heritage Commission should be putting in money for the celebration into their budget and come back to Budget Committee to present it?
That's correct.
Including perhaps detail if it's necessary. And that would take a conversation with the various chiefs to figure out what might be needed for that.
Yep, yep, he would put in a budget number, he would need to put in another.
Is that clear for you, Eric Ernie? Funda.
Maybe not.
I think also we have to determine what the rate's gonna be, so they can-
Yeah, but we have-
We have the rates.
The, both chiefs have standard rates.
Is it a detail rate, or is it a?
It's a detail rate.
It's still a detail rate.
It's not an overtime rate.
Now, it's getting through.
What you would need to do, Ernie, is talk with the chiefs to get the amount that you would need for that event. Because you'll talk to them about how many people you expect and what the traffic flow is, just like you would have a facilities event.
Right.
They'll help you figure out what you would need to budget.
The request for the facilities use is already-
Yeah, the question-
Been sent around, they need to-
The question is this. This event that we're planning is really under the jurisdiction, I'd say, the jurisdiction of the trustees of the trust funds. We, I mean, they're the ones, they're cemeteries, and the thought was that the funding would come from the trustees, not the Heritage Commission. Because we have a group that's working-
It comes from there, but we're saving it, and the Heritage- For the Heritage, it would come from the town. If you're saying it's coming for the trustees, then you need to talk to the trustees. Either they put it in their budget, or you put it in yours, one or the other.
Right, yes, and I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, that's what we're saying too.
The issue that needs to be clarified, I think, is, is whose budget is this event going into?
And you need to arm wrestle with the trustees, and whoever wins gets it.
That's fine with me, the understanding-
Whoever loses gets it.
Oh, whoever loses gets it, right. No, you two, I mean, I think you and the trustee should decide. The Heritage Commission should talk to the trustees, and you two decide. And you could jointly share it if you wanted to.
Right.
That's your choice also.
Yeah, my understanding was that we had already made that decision, but evidently we haven't.
Okay.
Is that right?
It's not in anyone's budget right now. It was an action item that came out of last Budget Committee to make sure anyone understood that.
We don't wanna come to next April and then not have any money.
Wait a second, I am reading my notes. It was, they put $1,750 in their budget for a police detail.
Who's they?
Trustees of the trust fund.
They didn't put it in their budget, it was a note, I think.
It was a note, okay, because I wrote it down.
Yeah, I did too.
Because I thought, that's really low-
Yeah.
For a police detail.
Well, it's, I think it's for the whole celebration.
On the celebration itself, the police detail is just-
They may not even need one.
Well, Chief, we put that-
You don't know, you don't know.
When we put the facilities use permit in, Chief Johnson did say that we needed a police detail. So that money for that is in that $1,750 budget.
It's included in that $1,750.
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, see, so, so they did, they, they already, right, you had that conversation then. So trustees of the trust fund is included in it.
Simple decision needs to be made where it comes from, them, the trustees, or-
Right, that's the choice.
So Stacy, you're saying, though, that that number is not reflected?
That number is currently not in the budget.
All right, so it needs to get, needs to get in there.
It needs to get in there.
All right.
Because that's my note.
Did you make that a follow-up note in your plate?
My plate? To put $1,750 into the budget, yeah, I'll talk-
Just, yeah, talk to John.
I'll talk to John, I'll make sure we get it in the budget.
Thank you, thank you, Ernie. Don't mean to complicate things.
Too late.
Well, I usually leave that to you, so I-
I don't complicate things.
Oh, no, yes, you do, don't even go there, let's not go there. All right, item next. A thank-you note to the school for use of the school for the elections. And we have a letter somewhere that we need to sign, I believe.
I think you have a copy.
Yeah.
I think it was well done, Susan, thank you. Okay, and she was fine with it?
It's fine, she just corrected me because I didn't put Dr. Ambrose, I put Mr. So that was a big-
Well, that's important now.
It's fixed.
It's important, yes.
It's very important, especially to us taxpayers who helped to get that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's no problem.
So we have it.
We do have it, yeah. I didn't quite see it, but we do have it. Let's see, the next item is the town hall-
Is it assumed we're just gonna sign it?
Oh, do you want a motion to do that?
We all have a, we all have a copy, so.
Well, I know, I'm gonna make a motion that we sign the letter dated November 12, addressed to Dr. Ambrose at the school district, thanking them for the use of the facility for the election.
Okay, is there a second? Yeah, it's right here. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, item next. The town hall signage estimate from Tammy. And why would that, I guess the question is whether it comes from her budget?
No, I clarified that with her today. It's not coming from her budget.
No, it should not.
She spent her money on the last rounds of signs, but there are some that they papered over with corrections, and she would like those fixed, but it was a question whether you wanted to spend that money and who's gonna spend it.
I would move $315 to be spent out of the contingency fund to get the signs.
Second. Any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we need to set a public hearing date to discuss the use of infrastructure fund interest for the bridge grant match.
That was discussed at a prior meeting, and there is a public hearing required, so.
So let's put it at the next meeting?
The next meeting is very busy, I think I was gonna go to December 2nd.
We've got three shows in the night.
Well, how long is it gonna take us to approve money, taking money for a bridge grant?
Literally five minutes.
I was gonna say 30 seconds.
If you wanna add it to next week, we can do it.
Yes, I just, it's not gonna take an inordinate amount of time.
I mean, we'll open the public hearing, take any comment that there is. It'll be a brief explanation of what it's for, close the public hearing, and vote.
Exactly. So five minutes might be more accurate to read it.
Right, because we have to read it.
Exactly.
Yeah, it'll be a 10-minute item, but oh, well.
Yeah, exactly, okay. Do you want a formal vote, or we're good in that? We're good for it next week, Susan. All right, tax, now, public comment number two.
Can we, under Board Business, I did add the item of the assessing increase for help in the, with the assessing department.
Okay, did I miss it on this here?
I don't see it on the-
I added it on, it's written on your agenda.
Well, it's not written on my, well, I'm glad you do, but I don't.
It was the one that I added after you left today. And you had the information on the email that I already sent you.
Okay, yes. Sorry we didn't have this sooner rather than later, because it might have eliminated some other stuff, but, well.
So I guess, I'm a little confused, because I thought we used to address all this. We had two meetings to address all this whole stuff downstairs. And then we, when we left the last time in the meeting, we asked, if anything else had to be done? No, everybody's all set. And now we're coming back to this again.
It's not the same thing, though, because basically what was addressed was the backlog of scanning. what was addressed was the backlog of scanning and the, the building permits and, and taking into payments. The assessing piece is not being kept up because that's basically up to me. So I, Katie, our assessor, suggested they do have people that could help us out in the interim. So that's when I reached out to Mary Beth and she suggested this scenario. So I brought it to you to consider. It would be a very big help to get us caught up and back on track.
So these, this, Katie, in the, in the days, is for the assessing part of it only? Not having anything to do with the window or?
Right, no, it's just the background.
This has nothing to do with the window being open four hours a day and Melissa down there?
It's not, it has nothing to do with the window, as I understand. It has nothing to do with the scanning backlog that, uh, that's being worked on.
Right.
It's kind of a specialized, sounds to me like it's a specialized piece, the assessing piece, that in, you know, to Peter's comment, I sort of thought we had addressed all this stuff too, but maybe we.
Well, the deeds alone, nobody's doing that.
Maybe we didn't talk about this, I don't know.
I don't think we did as specific as this. We talked about it in general and we were going to have this person cover and that person cover this.
Put your mic on, Chuck. Yeah, I had hoped to have.
This specifically assigns that person, new person, to do just the assessing stuff, nothing to do with.
But it's someone who's, apparently, it sounds like it's someone who already is experienced and do it.
Twenty-five years, what's an experience?
I had hoped to include some of this work with Cindy or with Marissa. Basically, they are not, I, first of all, I'd have to train them. So that's taking time for me to organize it, to get them up to speed. And it's for a temporary amount of time. So if you have someone that already knows the job, knows exactly what to do, can get us better organized in general, I just think that's really valuable.
And I would agree with that piece. I think it's, it would be nice to get caught up on, on backlog of stuff. Can we take these funds out of ARPA? Does this qualify? There's nothing left?
If we do, if we do the water treatment stuff for the three billion.
Oh, I see, that'll leave the, the rest of that. Well, then I think we should take it out of the contingency fund.
Do we have a balance of contingency fund?
Yeah, like sixty, sixty thousand? Contingency fund?
We have fifty thousand budgeted, I believe.
I don't think we've spent any of it to speak of.
You just tonight, you have it.
And we'd be looking at that from November and December.
Yeah.
And I think that, that we can do both months, but we don't know, we haven't got, Tori hasn't given us any kind of a plan, so we don't know.
She doesn't have a plan.
She doesn't have a plan.
All we need to do is cover November, December, and then in the big, three weeks from now, we have to talk about this again, okay? So we do have forty-seven hundred dollars requested for those two months and it should come out of contingency. And I believe the only other money from contingency has been the signage that Tammy has asked for. So there's more than sufficient funds in the contingency fund. So move. In a second?
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Forty-seven hundred dollar expenditure is approved for the assessing credit. Excellent. All right, now we can go through the orange folder for.
Update Town Council, there is outstanding issues.
Yeah, I understand that, but the first thing is the tax abatement requests.
Well, that too.
Okay.
That's what you were going to.
That's what I was going for.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, it's okay, no worries, no worries. Okay, um. This is, the first item is a grant agreement and I believe that's the block grant? Is that what this is in here, Susan?
Um, oh, that's for the Moose.
Okay, okay.
And that needs your signature and initials.
Any objection to my signing the Moose grant procedure?
Motion to authorize the chair to sign.
In a second?
Sure.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion granted. Passed. Okay, the first one is abatement, an administrative abatement and for property located in one Lincoln Circle. And it says the reason for the request, due to clerical error in entering the value for a new ADU, the property owner was billed an incorrect amount. The owner was taxed on the total assessed property value of seven hundred eleven thousand four hundred dollars. On his November bill, the correct total should be six fifty-three one hundred, six hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred. So the abatement amount is nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
And this is recommended by our assessor?
Yes, yes.
Make a motion to approve that.
In a second? And discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Then next is an application for facilities use. And that is for, uh, Board of Tax and Land Appeals.
They, um, they want to have a meeting here in April and they need to plan ahead, so they wanted to reserve the building this far ahead. It's for a parcel taking for the Route 125 project. There must be a, someone pushed back on it, so they.
Okay.
Since it's a Kingston property, they would like to have the meeting here.
All right, not everybody's signed off on all three sheets. Just saying, the first one has no one's signature.
It's because I, I sent it out and I got them back piecemeal. So who am I missing?
Well, on the first sheet, you're missing all of them.
Everybody, yeah, because they did.
On the second sheet, you're missing Graham Pellerin. And on the third sheet, you're missing both police and fire chief.
Well, we have time for Susan to get the rest of the signatures.
But it's okay for me to go ahead and.
They copied it and sent it back individually, so that's what happened.
So why don't we?
Why don't we wait until we get the signatures back on it?
All right, I'm going to leave this in this folder, but it won't be signed at all.
Who am I missing now? I got, I got Graham on one and.
Missing all on one sheet.
All on one.
Two on another and two on another, or not.
Well, what I mean is they each signed, but on a different sheet because they sent it back to me.
I understand that. But we can get, you can get Graham's signature tonight on two sheets.
Do you want them all on one?
Of three of the three sheets. Pass that down to Susan.
No, he's not, he's not, he's not inclined to do that now, yeah.
Yes, yes, he is. Now we have the facilities use for the pollinators. Do we have?
Which, which facility?
Rec Center.
The Rec Center. On Friday, November 15th and Saturday, November 16th. The annual seat swap and giveaway.
They've been planning that, but I only got that facilities use today because they didn't realize they needed to do it. It used to be handled through the Rec Center.
And there's those signatures on it.
And there's no signatures from any department yet.
The only, uh, I sent it out. Um, uh, Chief Johnston got back to me. He just had a question about the number of people and if they're parking on the road. And, and she's called me this evening and said, no. So I don't have a full answer on that, but it's happening this weekend, so. I didn't know if you could sign it contingent or something like that.
Well, I signed it contingent and all three chiefs agreed. The three departments agreed to it. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
In a second? Everybody okay with that in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody opposed? No.
No, I'd prefer not to, but.
I know. Well, we, we need to get it done because by the time we meet again, it's going to be over with.
Yes, I understand.
And this is for a permit for property tax credit exemptions. And those, site location is seven rights from row. So this is, they meant all the requirements, Susan?
Yeah, it's a solar, I believe.
That solar one, okay.
It's been reviewed by the assessor. She looks at those.
Okay, so there we go there. We have updates from Town Council regarding various issues. We also have some information update on the seminary project, which will go before the Planning Board.
They're going to have a public hearing at the HDC, I believe, the seminary.
Yep, they should, yep.
Inter, in, interesting the changes that they have made by reading this.
Wow, quite a bit of changes. And that should make everybody happy, but.
Not everybody.
Well, not everybody necessarily, but if they're going to move forward, that's what they need to do. Do you want to review the Count Council suggestions in non-public? The updates from Town Council regarding various issues.
Probably non-public.
Non-public, okay.
This is not decided on yet.
It's pretty much for your information because I was asked what the status was, so I reached out and that's what she.
Okay, so do we want a non-public to review it? Because we also have a letter of Mr. Farlow that needs to be addressed, that you have in our packets.
If it's appropriate, we'll talk about it there. If not, I don't see anything in there that's.
I don't see anything that's inappropriate. Who's the DPW liaison you are throwing? Okay, we need to talk to Tom about this and see where we stand. Get him, if you could follow up on that, I would appreciate that. And we have, we do have a non-public request. Well, we should be in non-public on that one. And that's the PIFAs. Okay. Any other items? Okay, let's go through the minutes that we have, a zillion of them. We have draft minutes from October 21st. The public and non-public, October 24th. Public. October 28th.
Yep, and November 4th.
And November 4th. On October 28th, it's clear I was absent. It says so in the beginning, but I did not take roll call vote at the end. No, no, to seal minutes, I did not do that that night. I usually do, but not that night. Even in a secia. Okay, do I have a motion?
So I have a question?
Sure.
The October 21 was just a non-public session?
Oh, I didn't reprint them, they were in your packets.
That was from previous?
Yeah.
Okay.
You had them with you, but we didn't get to the votes.
It was a regular meeting.
Got it. So I'm going to make a motion to start this off to approve both public and non-public minutes for October 21.
Okay, in a second?
Sure.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, then we have October 24. And that is.
So Susan, those were the ones I had a question on?
Yeah, we had a, some clarification on where I put down to achieve a five percent increase. The fund balance was dropped and I have two five hundred thousand dollars, but you thought it was by.
Yeah, so Paula, we need the exact numbers for how much we dropped the fund balance by and then how much the overlay was to get to the tax rate.
Okay, let's put, can you get that quickly? Is that, was that, okay. Let's hold those off for a second. Let's do the other ones. We have October 28. Public and non-public.
And I'll make a motion to approve both public and non-public minutes from October 28.
In a second? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ayes have it.
Are you abstaining, Ellie, or are you voting yea or?
I'm.
I mean, you can vote yea.
Yeah, I'll stay with the yea, doesn't matter because that's, as the gentleman from municipal association said, our job is to vote against, not abstain.
That's correct.
So I will stay with the, the majority here. And then we have November 4th and that's the one I was absent on. And all I have is public meetings, right?
Correct. Uh, no.
No, there's some.
No, there's a non-public for November 4 as well.
I think there's two of them.
Did I have your copy? I don't have that one.
Well, it's, it is here.
They might have come in with the stuff that was after you were in the office. Do you want my copy?
I would like it, I guess I do.
We reduced the fund balance by five hundred thousand by?
Thank you.
Was it five hundred even? Yep. Okay. And the overlay was two hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four. And no sense? There's no sense in any of them.
Okay, thank you. No sense, makes no sense.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paula.
So that was, okay, got it.
Okay, there's a motion for November 4th?
I'll make a motion for approving both public and non-public minutes of November 4.
In a second? And discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay.
Uh, do we need to go back?
Yes, we go back to the November, October 24th.
To the 24th as, as amended?
Right, as amended.
Okay, do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes, so moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, I don't have anything else other than one more non-public. Unless I missed something or someone's notes that I don't have?
Uh, no, I don't think so. So I'll make a motion to enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman two. Oops, it's not.
Sorry, before we do that, before we do that, we have a request from the planning board on a departmental comment sheet on the Benven, Benevento, Vitu Minus products, it's an application and a proposal to amend the existing site plan to add an enclosure over an existing recycled asphalt stockpile bin, and to remove an existing concrete pad, and I believe it's a matter of moving it on another site on the property.
Well, it's, it's a matter of removing the concrete pad where some material is currently being stored, so that's reducing the amount of impervious surface, and it's putting a cover over another area to protect some material that they're storing, so the net effect is, I reviewed this before we walked in, so I can, I can say this, the net effect is that they're reducing the impervious surface amount by a few hundred square feet, but, so it's an improvement actually, and I would say that we don't really have any comment.
We don't have any comment, but do we support their request?
Yes, I, I would.
Is that fair to say that?
I would.
Okay. All right.
And I want to think, Ellie, do you want to announce when you're still in public, because on the back of future meetings.
Sure. Yep, we have scheduled to date a meeting on November eighteenth, starting at five, uh, well, be a non-public, I believe, at five thirty. They went in public, that's to discuss the Lone Tree Council, and Lake Association and Community Power, all coming before us, November twenty-fifth, and nine AM is the Department Heads Meeting, and the public's on, a, a public forum on the future of recycling in Kingston is December second, and that would be, begin at six o'clock maybe that night.
That reminded me, so we got word back about the land, and they want to renew the lease for another twenty-five years, because they can't get through the sale of the property quick enough.
Okay, so that's a good piece of information to have.
So you have that, you have that in your inbox, so we need to get that to the lawyer to make sure, it should be no changes from the previous twenty-five year lease, but we wanted to just make sure that it's reviewed, right?
So it should go to Paula first, and then go to the attorney, does that make sense? Against Finance Director?
Yeah, yeah.
So that she stays in that loop?
Yep.
Okay?
And we're good with that, right?
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, all right, okay.
Right, and assuming that, that we continue with that, that, that then puts us in a position to move, move along with our.
Yes, exactly.
With our plans for using that property.
Right, and that came in on like Friday afternoon or something, it came in pretty late last week, so.